I'm glad Mr. Wall is not going. Is that chain loose or you sticking around? So I'm looking here, what I'm hearing from this report and I saw earlier when I looked at it, it sounds like the reading between the lines, the committee, I know it's the final decision lies upon this body, but it sounds like there's someplace in the middle, some kind of, you know, well-balanced mix. But my question to you is like, when we have these items right here, infrastructure items, bathrooms, elevators, windows, I'll take roofing for example. If we go with the heavy infrastructure, light new addition, we can spend a little over fifty million dollars. If we go to the opposite end, where it's light infrastructure and very heavy on new additions, it's less than fifty percent, it's twenty-two point six million dollars. What I'm going with this is that, do we have the details? Like, you know, what buildings need to be done right away or some can wait five years?
Yes, we do. We're working on that plan and we have a pretty good rough draft of it done. We met with the buildings last week, all the principals in the buildings to make sure they had a chance to look at it, make sure everything they thought was needed in there. We, we have ten buildings left to still have to go through that process. They weren't able to meet last week. So we're gonna finish it this week and hopefully by the time we come back, spring break, it will be ready. In your document, I have in the folder for discussion after the VIP summary pages of where we're at right now. And that way you gotta get ideas broken down by building, it's also broken down by category. So you'll see that. The detail we'll have, once it gets all vetted and we have that third party review it, we'll make sure all the numbers are in there are correct, that we know what the dollar values truly are. What we try to do with the VIP committee is not actually say, this is what we're going to do, but give you kind of a plan of what it would look like if we had to do heavy infrastructure and new buildings, just kind of doing a mix of one or the other. Not necessarily those are the exact things we do, because we haven't even had a discussion yet on that at the board level or a community level, but just kind of give an idea of what it would look like if one of those three scenarios was recommended.
I'm imagining if, I mean, if we don't have that information, yeah, and we're working on it. I know it's a huge district and putting this together is not easy. So maybe the, I'm imagining if I was a community, if I was a committee member, I was just kind of looking just like a generic list here.
Right, kind of looking what the plan would look like and it would get further detailed as we go down through the process. I know that was questioned asked many times and I wish I would have had that information available. But again, as you said, it just takes a while to get all the details down on paper and have it reviewed by all the building principals and then vetted by our outside resources.
When the committee toured the buildings, did we point out certain things that need to be done like right away?
Yes. And then, and that's where a lot of their questions came from and it's kind of where we got to, where we developed a list of the priorities that they voted on, because they got to see that in person and that's where I'm sure had influence on how they rated, what needed to be done. They're looking at the bathrooms, that was the most highly rated thing. They got to see that and that's why they felt that that was something that had to be addressed. You know, it was one of the top priorities. Security, I think, was roughly number two or close to it.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts? I just want to say thank you for putting this presentation together and for all of your time to do this, because I would imagine you guys took time away from your own families. So I truly appreciate this and it just saddens me that bathrooms are the first thing. And I know when I went and visited the school, I definitely checked all, I visited every single school, I think, but two during COVID last year and bathrooms were my number one ask to see, because I wanted to be able to see, what do the bathrooms look like? Because I hear about the conditions of the bathroom and how there's some kids that don't want to use a bathroom because of the self-respect issues. And it just makes me sad that bathrooms are on there, but I'm happy that it's on number one. So it's, it's, it's emotional, but, um, but thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, because I appreciate all the time you guys put into this, so. Trustee Petrichov?
Okay, I also want to, I've been on task force in the past and I understand the amount of time it takes and it's quite an education when you get to participate. So it also is, is helpful to be part of the community who wants to participate and go out and, and communicate correct information about what's occurring in our district and our city. So I too thank you all. Um, one of my questions is just so that, for clarification purposes for everyone, three point five mils seems to be what the majority of the people were comfortable with and it would generate, I'm seeing at the bottom of each of these things, around two hundred and fifty million is necessary for a lot of these ideas to be implemented. It, is that the number we would be generating with maintaining the three point five mils?
And that's where the conversation that had at the VIP committee was very across the board. And we told them that right now we're at three point five mils. So I'm sure that led to some of the discussion of maintaining what we're currently at. As you can see, some wanted to go higher and some wanted to go lower.
But would that be sufficient to do, I mean, we know that a wish list is always a wish list and that you have to whittle down with the money you actually are generating. What is the three point five mils going to generate over the next ten years, twenty years for us?
Yeah, so anywhere from two hundred to two fifty, depending on how we design the bonds, yes.
Okay, so when we talk about the differentiation between heavy infrastructure versus light infrastructure versus new buildings versus, that money is going to have to be divvied up and it's only two hundred and fifty million basically to cover all of those potential.
Not all. You'll see that will say that the needs way outweigh that, but the discussion was being responsible to the taxpayers and what the taxpayers would actually approve. That was a lot of discussion.
I, I just want to clarify that this is not going to, we're not going to get everything.
Correct.
Trustee Thorpe?
So on the question that was asked to the committee about voting for an increase in the number of mils, it just says to increase it. We didn't give options of a half versus a mil or anything like that, correct? Where people could say, well, I'd be okay doing one more, but I wouldn't want to do two more.
Well, we used one mil because if they only want to do a half, it was an easy division. Or if they want to do two, it was an easy addition. So we use one mil just as an example of what it would do.
On that other slide?
Yes.
But at least for this question to the committee, it was just asking about an increase, not how much of an increase?
Correct.
Okay.
Trustee Mozab?
Uh, the three point five number, is that, so can you explain to me if, when does that expire as far as the years of the bond and when does it pick up?
So after twenty-two, twenty-three, that three point five mils will drop to a little above one mil. And that'll kind of maintain for the next ten years and then it would roughly stop.
If we do nothing.
If we do nothing. Correct.
So when what we're doing, then we're gonna just increase for the next ten years by two point two, bring that back to three point five?
Well, what we do is we look over the life of what we're gonna put the bonds at and that difference between maintaining our existing one and the difference, that's what would maintain three point five mils through the life of the bonds or close to it, because everything slightly drops over time because of taxable values. That's what the proposal was discussed about and what it could raise. Now, you know, we haven't really had, this is the first time the board's really discussing the subject, you know, outside of what we did back in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand nineteen, we also talked about maintaining the mills at four point eight two back then. Since then, that four point eight two has dropped down to three point five.
Right. And that's because of obviously the, the bond didn't pass, we're dropping as we're going.
And we've also done a refinancing in two thousand seventeen, refinancing in two thousand twenty-one and then another refinancing in twenty-twenty, we just finished up. And that whole refinance that we just did at the last board meeting isn't even calculated into these projections.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
The two thousand twenty-two refunding that the board approved at the last board meeting is not even figured out into these number projections, because we didn't know what the results were at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Trustee Watts?
So I have to go back to your presentation after hearing this in this presentation. So I'm hearing that the three point five will expire twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Right, it'll not expire, it'll be reduced.
It'll be reduced, okay.
To a little over one mil.
So for those who are listening and they want to know in practical terms, what does that mean to the bottom line? If they were, if the, if we were to present a bond for three point five mils, what does that look like for a person who's paying taxes on their home?
So right now, that three point five mils will maintain what they're currently paying now in the number of mils. Does not mean in the number of dollars, because depending on the taxable value and the such value in your houses, you know, that could potentially go up, so you can pay more taxes. Or potentially it could go down and you can pay less taxes. What we're saying is we're maintaining the number of mils that we're gonna levy for our debt purposes.
So say the house is valued a hundred thousand. Do we have that sort of number of saying, this is how much a three point five mil?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And that was discussed at the VIP committee.
Do we have that, that we can share now?
Yes, if Dave wasn't bringing up that.
Because I think everyone's saying like, we hear the mils, but what does that actually look like when you get that tax?
We've shared that graph many times. Let me try to dig.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Yep. Because that was important for people to know the affordability of what that actually means.
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Barry?
Going back to Trustee Petrichov, there was a very, very great point that you made about the three point five. Now, knowing that maybe other than Jack Riley, you're probably the number one or two guy on the stand on this. Okay, the question I'm gonna ask is, we got to the three point five because the last bond didn't pass. So because the last bond didn't pass, we dropped one point three two mils. So did you take into consideration that property values are going up, SEVs is gonna follow, and one mil in twenty twenty, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three is gonna be more than?
Worth something different.
Yeah, so the projections we had in there based upon the roughly, I think, a two percent increase over time on taxable values. So that's how we determined how that, that maintaining the three point fill, three point five mils maintaining would actually generate additional money each year as it increased by two percent. And that's how they came to what we could potentially bond for, for maintaining the three point five mils. So there is a escalation increase in taxable values.
Two to three percent is what you're saying.
Two percent roughly, yes.
Well, I know you can only deal with, with the numbers you have right now, but you're gonna be very happy after this year, the numbers you're gonna see.
Well, the pandemic and the way the inflation rate changes, that changes the whole model. But again, we didn't want to jump and change numbers as we continue discussion to maintain what we have.
We have that.
So he has it, he'll bring it.
Okay, then what?
There you go.
Oh wow, let's go.
So this gives you the market value of the home and the taxable value. Again, you know, the market value of a home could be much higher than what you pay taxes on, depending on how long you've lived in the house, if you bought it brand new. We don't get into that complexity, but all that is determined at the city or township level. And so looking at three point five mils, you can see what it means on an annual basis. So a hundred thousand dollar home would have roughly a fifty percent taxable value if they were just purchased that year. And that would raise about a hundred seventy-five dollars per year they would pay in taxes for the debt millage. Then we broke it down by month and broke it down by day. Now again, that three point five mils doesn't change, however, the taxable value can slowly increase. So that hundred seventy-five dollars for a hundred thousand dollar value home would go up slightly depending on the increase in the value.
Well, thank you for providing the slide, because it gives us a, a better concrete example as to how that will, so when you get the tax, when you get your bill, right, your taxable, you see what that is. And then going back to this in terms of the bathrooms, and I know this is an ongoing discussion at every single school district, to, do we know what sort of items and or doors and or other things that we'd be putting in the bathroom that we wouldn't have to replace? I think this was a discuss, do you know, see, yeah. So I don't know if, do we already have an idea of what that would be or is that still something down the line that we would have to look at?
That's probably something we would want to work with the building principals who know and our operations department who replaces it, you know, on a, on a sometimes continual basis. So there's a balance system of, you know, grade versus look, you know, of how we would have to come to an agreement. And again, you know, oh, we're talking a lot of conceptual things here. There has to be time with the architects, you know, and operations and the, you know, the principals of design, what they actually would want in there.
Dr. Maleka wanted to add something.
So I'll add something on the bathroom too, but I appreciate it. I just wanted to mention too, in the last time we talked about it, but Tom, under his leadership, you know, the board has approved the refinancing bond, which has saved millions of dollars for the taxpayers. We've done that now several times. I just wanted to point that out so the public knows. I know we mentioned it last month at the, or at the previous board meeting. As far as the bathrooms go too, and I had a very positive conversation, for example, with a community member about the bathroom issue, and it was something that kept coming up with my counsel, the student advisory council back in the two thousand nineteen bond. So that money would have been allocated from that bond. You know, some of the things, when you prioritize the list, as Tom explained, the funding system, you know, the question we discussed was, well, what are the higher priorities? So obviously, school safety is a number one, you know, electricity and boilers and heat and roofs, those are things that, you know, will take a higher priority than the bathroom redesign, even though we want to do the bathroom redesign. But when you're looking at a district our size, we're talking about hundreds of bathrooms across the way. So one bathroom here and there may not be the cost, but when you look at the enormous amount in the district, it's a huge cost. When we had Dearborn High, you get emergencies, for example, and the electrical went down and we know there's issues there that we had to implement because of the aging infrastructure. And another example would be Oakman with the old building approaching a hundred years and thanks to our staff that we moved them, we didn't want to go online, but we did, but we had the major infrastructure issue with the plumbing that was twenty-three feet below ground that we had to resolve that week and it was just before the election. So when you're balancing the need, what's gonna happen is without a bond, we will have to continue to implement putting money into areas. Obviously, you can, you know, you can put money here or take it there. But for example, when we settled the contracts, because we know we have a massive staff shortage, that money does have to come from somewhere. So it was taken, money that we had added to infrastructure and things. We had to balance that with now money that's, you know, for our employees. So some of the designs of the bathroom, which are more effective, because the principals, for example, at the high school and, and middle school, I know when we studied it at the time, we're looking at like, you know, you go to Metro Airport and there, there's no doors. You have the walk-around and so they're more optimal for many, many reasons to have those kind of situations. And then you can enhance it and the students had always tell me, you know, they wanted to see the bathrooms upgraded. It was something important to them, so I just wanted to add those aspects.
Thank you. Trustee Mozab?
Yep. No question about the new additions and new buildings? And I see only one elementary school and obviously two hundred forty million or in that range or two hundred fifty million. As of right now, if we can, if you can remind us on an average, what are the costs of building a brand new elementary, a brand new middle and a brand new high school with the size of both of our schools?
So what we estimated is roughly about forty-two million dollars for a new elementary for a larger sized one. You know, it wouldn't be necessarily the size of Oakman, but more of, you know, like a gear park type scenario.
Yeah. Gear Park, there are four hundred, four hundred students?
Oh, Mark, do you know that one?
No, I don't.
I can get it.
And then Gear Park had two additions, by the way, in the beginning of the bond when it was built and then later on, the second bond, there were more additions to it.
And I give the VIP committee, they were very thorough. They would ask, well, where would that elementary go? I don't know that answer. It's just conceptually that if we did that scenario, that we could add one elementary on it. And, you know, you know, the, the VIP was so good at answering questions and, and they would stump me because I don't have all the answers and that's something that the board, you know, and the community might want to work more on, decide if we did do that scenario, where it would go. So that's why we don't necessarily have the answers, we just gave a generic example of what, if you did the minimum, you could still get an elementary in that design, because old versus new was a, a big discussion. You know, the VIP committee said they wanted something visible. Infrastructure is not, you know, big selling. It's necessary, but doesn't big sell, so they wanted a mix of new and, you know, infrastructure type.
Going into that question, can we go back to the slide where they were asking about that same question? And I want to just get an understanding more of what does that number mean? Where you have that, like, are we building brand new buildings or just maintaining existing and it was like survey?
You mean the three, the three different?
No, 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 it was just, two, it was two survey, we're saying six point eight.
I think what new and old are.
Okay. Mr. Producer, can we lose this slide on the screen, please? Thank you.
It was six point eight.
Oh, you're talking about slide seventeen on that, I believe.
I don't have it in front of me anymore.
It's slide, slide number twelve, David.
Oh, it's slide twelve.
Is what I, Mr. Trustee Mozab's referring to.
Which one?
Yeah.
This one where it's renovating.
New buildings versus renovating existing.
I'd like to know more about, yeah, this number. Can you, can somebody explain to me, what is eight point eight, is that out of ten?
That is out of ten, ten being the highest.
So how did the committee members vote on this? Like, were they asked the question first? How, how did eight point eight and the six point five came to be above?
That was a ranking of what they thought, like, like bathrooms ranked up there at nine out of ten as important. They said renovating existing buildings was eight point eight versus new buildings were six point ranked lower.
But the committee members were not asked, do you want a new building?
No, 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 they, they were given a list, there was a list of items, if you, right. There is a list of items, incl, from bathrooms, security, new buildings, a crosswalk over Ford Road, green parking lots. So they were given this huge list based upon recommendations that the district saw and ideas that came out of the, the committee. And they were asked to rank those one to ten. Yeah.
So slide, the next slide gives more of the breakdown, fourteen with all the colors.
Yeah, that one, that one.
Nope, back one.
That.
So they got to rate each question, each category from one to ten. Wasn't, you know, which one you like over more of the others, just each one by themselves on a rating from one to ten.
So bathrooms was the number one for them and the, the least was the green parking lots, then at four point three.
Yeah, they all could have said green parking lots, they could have said ten and would have come up to ten point oh. So they're not related to each other, just each one by themselves, how they felt about it.
Did the committee members get to, I'm sorry, then talk about each one or did they get to choose ten of the, the list here and, and just your top ten, not every point?
So they generated ideas from the meeting before and we put everything out there.
So thirty-five people got each item and they, and each item they did a one through ten. And that's where they averaged out.
So same question, they were not asked, would you rather, obviously, in a perfect world, everybody with unlimited amount of money, we would want new buildings. However, we do have, I want to just mention this, some people and, Trustee Barry can attest to this, we do have adamant folks in our community who are holding on to the history and to the buildings and they're saying, we're not gonna tear this part on my dead body, they would vote me on that. So obviously, we're not gonna please everybody and we don't have unlimited amount of money to build brand new schools. I, I was just interested in the committee, this kind of whole idea, it's kind of throwing it off and then aggregating it to a number and say, oh, well, seems like the new committee wanted new additions. I would hope that we asked the committee, would you want to invest in re-innovating older buildings and keeping them as they are or would you like to build brand new schools? Was that question ever asked?
Yep. Ms. Hayder?
So a part of the discussion was legacy and holding on to older buildings because of legacy and because of sentiment. And a lot of conversation went on around that and some of the, the committee members said, I would rather have my child in a brand new building with the facilities, with the technology and invest the money in a brand new building than hold on to a sentiment and a legacy. And of course, there were committee members that wanted to hold on to that sentiment and the legacy and that's why we voted and that's how these numbers came to be.
Thank you. That was helpful.
I believe Mr. Andrews has something to say.
Just to give you, Gear Park is three hundred seventy-five approximately.
Yeah.
And is that pretty full?
It's pretty full.
Yeah.
Okay.
Every class is full.
So real quick, going back to the size of the elementary school that could be built, Miller is a perfect example, that's a seventy thousand square foot building with about three hundred and fifty students.
And that's comparable to what we're out here?
The forty-two million? Forty-two million would get you an elementary building just like Miller.
How many students are in McCullough and Unis? You know, I have that as well.
About twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred together.
Around there.
I was just there for the swimming meets for middle school and this is the first time I see the pool. What an amazing pool. That's, that's, I know, I know pools are like, fortunately, they are very costly to maintain, especially older ones. But McCullough Unis is beautiful. As beautiful, I'm not gonna say as beautiful as Fortson or Lori, but it is, it is an amazing building that was built by the taxpayers' dollars and that was great. And I would hope that we would perhaps build a brand new schools, but they're very costly, as Mr. Watts, as Mr. Wallace said.
Did you want your other two questions of what a middle school would cost and a, any high school?
Yeah, I would love to.
On average? And, and I guess this wouldn't include those properties, but it's just the building itself?
And with that, reflect today's cost of materials?
And it'll change tomorrow.
There's crazy remodeling my dad's house right now.
I think this historical number we were given before for a high school was about a hundred million? Or was it more than that?
A hundred and twenty was bells and whistles.
A hundred and eighty, yeah.
Last time we discussed it, it was between, depending on what we wanted, between eighty-five and one twenty. I mean, we're not gonna build a high school to house three thousand students, but I think we said something like around twelve hundred to fifteen.
I don't want to make a guess right now.
I think it's in, it's in one of the slides.
It is.
He's looking for it, so let's just.
We'll, we'll wait for that, that's fine. Thank you.
Where'd that come from?
There was, there was a slide that had it broken out from, um.
I saw it somewhere too.
It was in one of the slides.
Oh, and, and slides here, I'm talking about the last time.
No, not last time, this was one now.
This is on a test before.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Trustee Watts?
So in this.
And then I'll get to Trustee Barry.
My question's been answered, it was just to follow, make sure that Trustee Mozab's question.
So in here, we have an elementary school that says forty-two million. Is it that there's a, with this in here, is it a hypothetical or is it the, we would take? I guess, why put the elementary, do we need to have a new elementary school? I guess that's the question. You can answer it later on, if you're looking for the numbers.
Perhaps. Well, in the, in the rating score, it says that the committee only thinks that's a five point five.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so why do we have it in there if it's not a need?
I was wondering the same thing.
So.
Did you want to address that, Dr.?
I would just say though, it's, it's a philosophy too, right? And I know Mr. Wall's gonna talk a little bit about long-term study, but new buildings versus renovation, so.
So that, but that's okay, so that might be answered later on in.
Yeah, well, and, and it's, like you said, that's what the, the committee was kind of presenting where the philosophy was. So you could, you could really go either way. Like in the two thousand nineteen, we were mainly looking at renovation in that bond. This bond now, there's been discussions about, more about new buildings.
So with that, I guess, is then if we're thinking of a new elementary school, would that replace an old elementary school? And if it is, then how would we, how would we select what building that would be?
We'd be looking at need, we'd be looking at need.
And the condition of the existing.
I was gonna say, and then are we looking at the price to maintain an older building versus long-term, getting a new? Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure we had that, sort of.
But there's more questions than just that.
The, can I just add one thing though? I mean, the reality is if we want new, with the district our size with thirty-five buildings, forty-one school programs, and we know of bonds that are like the Ann Arbor with huge money to have multiple, it was over a billion, approximately, one billion for new, you know, to get that many buildings, you know? But I think even administration in our discussions, and again, I wasn't on the committee, but it seems like that was where the committee was going too, with the appetite for some new buildings, but also understanding the need, at least in administration, our data, we understand the infrastructure need across the district, so everyone's taken care of. But we also understand that there's excitement behind new buildings and there is that give and take where you cut your losses and where you're putting in money into old infrastructure versus, you know, creating new, so.
Trustee Barry?
Just for the listening audience, we're not going out for a billion dollars.
Oh, no, yeah.
I'm just using that as an example.
It was an example, but, uh, Trustee Watts had a very good question. The last time we went out, we heard loud and clear that if you're gonna ask for that kind of money, we want some brick and mortar. So I'm assuming, when I, like I said, it was only a few hours ago when we looked at this, I'm assuming that maybe they wanted that discussion at the committee level, that, you know, what does it look like? I don't, you know, this is the first time I've heard that we might have to replace an elementary school. We've talked about, you know, possibly a high school or, or maybe a middle school or something like that. I'm assuming that was just, just to discuss to tell, you know, tell the committee, you know, which direction you do want to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I, if I may, just interject, when the discussion of a new elementary school came up to the committee, same questions were asked, is it a brand new elementary school or are we relieving the existing elementary schools, because some of them do have our overcapacity? And the, the one question that came up at the end of the discussion was, assume we do.
And the, the one question that came up at the end of the discussion was, assume we do open up an elementary school and fill it with students, will, where will they go to high school in eight years? So we're still at the same capacity issue that we had to begin with, we didn't fix anything. So now we have more elementary schools and still the same number of high schools.
Yeah, uh, trust, uh, President McDonald, I just wanna note that, you know, in the first, probably one, the second slide or third slide where it says, the ages of the buildings. We have twelve buildings that are over ninety years old, uh, this year we're celebrating the hundred years anniversary of Deval and Fortson.
And Maples.
The building's not a hundred yet at Fortson, but the building at Deval is and so is Salina.
Yeah, and Salina, we celebrated two years ago, or was it twenty nineteen?
Well, technically, their building doesn't turn, is, was a hundred in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, just like Deval, but there was a building previously.
Lady that was there.
That was called Salina and that was torn down, but that one was built in nineteen seventeen or eighteen or whenever the hundred year was. So they were celebrating a hundred years of Salina, just as Fortson is celebrating a hundred years of.
Of Fortson.
Of a Fortson, although there technically was not a Fortson High School. The building that exists now did not exist in nineteen twenty-one.
When did it exist for Fortson?
Twenty-eight, uh, it opened twenty-seven, twenty-eight is when Fortson, yeah, officially opened.
And usually, Mr. Wall, with other districts, are we comparable as far as the building ages? Or are we on the far out as far as?
We're probably on the farther out because we're older school district, you know, depending on where the district is located, you know, like Novi, you know, used to be very, very small. But since they had all those suburban, you know, road, they just built new buildings and so they're, they're a much newer school district in their size.
Probably Detroit is one of the ones with the older buildings.
Well, we've seen their buildings.
Yeah, Rose Point has older schools, things like that.
But ours have been maintained well, though. Our buildings, our older buildings have been maintained well, but, but there's a cost involved before.
So, so what's this lifespan of, say, some buildings that we have, are we expecting another twenty years, thirty years?
Hey, great segue into the next section after this discussion.
Okay.
I was just ready to move on because we're actually quite be, uh, far behind schedule, so.
Do we wanna bring up that spreadsheet?
Were there any more questions now?
Well, there's one more spreadsheet we wanna show you, so if the back room could bring it up.
Thank you.
All right, so what we did is, this, this was a list of all the items that the committee brought forward of things they would like to look at. We took this list and had the architect, the construction manager, you know, plant man look at it and cost it out. Again, there was no way to actually give an actual cost, we did a low percent quartile and a high quartile, so you know that somewhere the price is gonna be between those numbers. And so we did that and then showed our costs by taking the average of the high and low, to kind of give them an idea. And we gave them this spreadsheet so they could actually take it home and, and select, well, if I'm interested in this, this and this, what it would total down to. And so they had this to kind of play with to kind of see how much it would cost. So on here, under the new buildings, an elementary school, um, would be at, um, s- let's see. Uh, high school, no, you were asking about a middle school, right? So a, a, uh, elementary school at seventy thousand square feet? I don't know why my number's not there. Don't have a middle school on there, so we didn't actually, they didn't actually look at a middle school in that object, but if you looked at, how big is McCullough Unis?
Students?
No.
No square footage.
It's probably gonna be about, about a hundred and fifty square, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand, so you're probably looking at probably about ninety million for, you know, a K, you know, eight type building or a middle school.
In a high school?
They have the high school.
In high school, we have on here, you know, for three hundred thousand square feet, so not as big as Fortson, but close, you're looking at a hundred and eighty-eight million. And that's how we got to that, and these are the numbers we used, you know, when we developed the building, you know, options.
A hundred and eighty?
Yep, a hundred and eighty.
That's with bells and whistles, field, pool, everything included?
Yes, correct.
Do you remember what that number was? I know we just, we thought we knew, but do you remember what the number was? When we talked about maybe a twelve hundred to fifteen hundred student high school?
That, that could be, that could be closer to what we're saying for the middle school, based on the number of students, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
Correct. Yep, so you're closer than ninety to a hundred million, tell them, yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Again, I wanna thank the committee, they did a lot of work and a lot of questions.
I was just about to do that. And Ms. Hayder and also, uh, I don't wanna put your name.
Albercat.
Albercat? Albercat.
Albercat.
Albercat? Thank you so much for your presentation, you did very well, we appreciate your time. And, uh, I wanna make sure, if she hasn't already, that she does get, uh, extra points for her, uh, her student activities, so. Thank you for, for helping us out and you did marvelously.
Thank you. I have one quick question. Sure, absolutely, so is there a difference per square footage between an elementary school, a middle school and a high school?
Yes, there will be, just on the complexity of the classrooms, like, an elementary is not gonna have a chemistry lab, but a high school will, so your square footage cost would go up.
Okay, so I figured out for the high school for three hundred thousand square feet, it's six hundred and twenty-six dollars a square foot?
Yes, it, it is.
Could we get the square footage, could we get the price for elementary school and for middle school based on the square footage?
Yep, we can provide that.
But then that would include a pool as well, which would be a, um, larger increase.
Okay.
Yeah, and in this discussion three years ago, that number would have been a lot less.
Absolutely.
That's unfortunately what we're dealing with, the rate of inflation is going up so much higher.
And the cost of materials.
Yes, and I was sticker shocked when they gave me the numbers and I had actually gone on the internet all night looking at it and trying to, you know, come to grips of why is it so much more? But it, it's across the nation, the prices are just skyrocketing.
Community service points was what I was trying to think of, so I hope you can get some extra of those.
She's been saying I'm getting an A in all my classes.
And you should have a late start tomorrow, I'm just saying.
Thank you again, okay, uh, next we have the administration, question and answer, was that, or was that all kind of combined into what we just?
Well, we've already kind of gone into it, so we're just gonna continue further.
Okay.
All right, so on, on your packet in the, in the manila folder, here's some documents. Uh, the first document is just looking at what we have actually spent our building in site fund since two thousand nineteen. So, and just kind of give me ideas, so the main ki- item that we spent on is not, the number ten is three point three million on roofs. So we really focused on the building envelope over the last several years because if you have leaky roofs or HVAC issues, those are what we spent, you know, five of the eight million on is just HVAC and roofs. So this kind of gave me a breakdown, not really to go through it, but kind of give you some background as you go forward in your discussions today and, and after, that you have an idea of what we have already done.
And, but this is not, this is excluding the Esser funds that we've used for.
Correct, now the additional Esser and the forty million that we had in building in site from leftover from what we didn't do and that we're wrapping around to do the eighty million dollars project going forward. And that's mainly dealing with HVAC and there'll be some more roofing and you've seen some of those contracts come through the last several months as we get geared up for summer work.
Trustee Thorpe?
My sheet only goes one through nine, so while you're mentioning number ten, I don't know if after that you've got a summer, uh, not a summary, but a summation of the, the, how much has been spent on projects since that. Oh, I'm sorry, it says right there eight point eight million at the top, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe I did copy two sided and I missed it, so I apologize.
So it's eight point eight plus what we're expecting to be spending the summer on the Esser.
Yeah, this is what we've already spent, so not dealing with the eighty million that we're working on.
Thanks.
But this does not include the HVAC, does it?
Yeah, HVAC is the very last item of one point eight million on the sheet. It carries forward that would have been copied on the backside.
Is it only for Fortson, but I thought we're doing?
Well, Fortson, that's part of the Esser and the forty million for, that we're doing.
Oh, that's only two thirty K, okay.
These are things we've already spent on before we got into this year's works of.
More like emergency.
Yes.
Repairs that we had to do.
Correct.
Can I, can I ask?
Yes, trustee Petzka.
Okay, uh, we don't have it in front of here and I know I saw it on here, but I don't have it right in front of me, um, we, there was a, um, and I know the committee got it of. What we have taken off the list that was on the original twenty nineteen bond, is a lot of that what's included in here or?
That's, that's part of what's in the two thousand nineteen forward data.
In here that we had, because we had some roofs and we had some HVAC that back then, so.
Yeah, so we had a facility plan done then and we took those items that were in the critical needs, one to three years, and that's what we've been working on.
Okay.
Now occasionally things still happen, like the plumbing at Oakman wasn't planned, so we have to obviously deal with that as we go along.
Well, since I live in that neighborhood, I could have told you it was coming because I got problems.
But on the administrative Q and A, we're gonna again have to look at short term and long term, obviously, we have to do something in the interim and we also have to plan for the future. Now, one of the things that has been brought up in the past is the, when does the useful life of our building eventually get to a point where it no longer makes sense to renovate? And we should start building new, now that's something, that's a long, you know, correlation type study. And so I, I reached out to two companies to kind of help us with that plan. Cause that, you know, you're, you're, you're dealing with a lot of time and effort and, you know, comparisons and analyzing data. That I don't know if we're necessarily the best to be able to do that, so I reached out to two companies to look at that and I did give you a copy of a proposal from one company that would do that and the price range involved with it.
Trustee Petzka.
One of the things that, um, people don't consider a lot of times when they talk about building new, and since we, we don't have a lot of vacant land and they think that we're just gonna knock down that building and put up a new one. What do you do with the students in the meantime? Because they have to be educated somewhere and a building doesn't go up in three months during the summer.
Right, and that's logistics of it.
They have to be put someplace else, um, to be educated for a year, potentially longer, while the, eh, we use the property, the existing property we own. And, and i- it's something to really consider when you're telling people you're, we're gonna upheave your neighborhood while knocking down an old building and. Um, reconstructing a new building on the same site, otherwise you're gonna be moving everybody someplace else.
Correct.
So, and, and I, I wanna caution that somebody will be impacted and I've been on boundary committees before where you're just moving them from one existing building to another existing building and it's stressful. Um, so, uh, that always has to be taken into consideration when we talk about it, it's, it's not as logistically simple. As just, um, finding the money and starting, uh, putting a shovel in the dirt.
Yep, and I give the credit, the VIP, the committee came up with the same question and they had some suggestions too, so good job on that. Again, you know, un- until we know what the future entails, you know, it was, they brought up that issue and they understood it and it's something that we would have to consider. So I do have that in there as just kind of your background.
Okay.
Um, if you look at the actual pricing, you know, they, as one estimate, it was anywhere from the mid one fifties to two hundred thousand dollars to do a study like that. But that would give you a plan over the life of the next thirty years, similar to what Detroit has recently done. And what it would look like, you know, the phasing of it, how we would look at, a big picture or a big component of that is the educational program. Cause obviously it'd always be cheaper just to keep renovating or, or redoing parts of building, but at some point the building, uh, lasts its useful life for our educational program. And it's diminishing, you know, returns on the education that we're offering to kids, so those are the things that also have to be considered in this type of a study.
Trustee Moses?
I have a question, maybe trustee, uh, Mr. Wall, this is unrelated probably to the, or discussion about a bond, but might be kind of related, the whole, the old harmless. So we're expecting to renew that in a few years?
Well, a- a- as time progresses, the, the funding mi- model in Michigan, the, the maximum foundation the state pays and what ours is is slightly above that, that gap is narrowing. At some point, it's gonna overtake it and will no longer be a hold harmless district. So if you remember last year, if we were, uh, a, a standard foundation allowance, you would, you received a little over five hundred dollars on the per people allowance. We only received one eighty, so, as you see, they've been closing that gap, now this year, the governor's proposed another four hundred plus to that. And we would get, the way they have designed right now, they're not doing a two X four unless, so we would maintain that distance. But again, it has to go through the legislative process and the senate and the house might say, no, we wanna go to a two X formula, it might happen this year. You know, it's one of those things, we just don't know, cause it's a legislative process that the government, you know, the state government oversees. So there could be a, a situation that we would no longer levy the six point one seven mils, but we just don't know, until it gets.
So what happens when we cross that?
So when we cross that, the six point one seven mils would go away. We would no longer levy that because of what the state's paying us.
The taxpayers would no longer pay it.
Is meeting and exceeding what we were promised, you know, with, based on inflation since nineteen ninety-four when proposal A came into B.
So would the taxpayers see a huge break on their tax?
Yes.
But, uh, with the state then compensate us?
Well, the state has to pay additional money for us to bring us back up to our normal revenue levels.
Right, okay.
But the one question I did have about that, and I had asked you that and we've not, don't have an answer because it's not been accounted before, what if the state funding change, shifts again?
And goes down.
That back low, are we allowed to then reinstate that hold harmless? Or are they gonna say, it's done, it's over with and you're, you're not gonna be at, at the funding you were, were accustomed to?
As long as the millage still exists, you know. Right, cause we have to, the voters approve on that, hold harmless millage every ten years and it's coming up when? Twenty twenty-four and our eighteen mils, so we do it every ten years, I believe, correct? So we're coming up to that prefix again and then we have to worry about how to handle it.
Yeah, so it's, it's a conversation again.
Trustee Watts?
So going back to this, um, corporation or business that would be able to give us a master plan. So with that, would they be able to give us a longitudinal, longitudinal study, um, regarding all of our buildings or just which?
We would ask for all of our buildings.
So all of our buildings, we would be able to say at this, they would be able to research it and say, this is what, this is what, how much it would be to maintain going ten years out, twenty years out?
Well, maintaining of where the existing building is, what are the needs, now we have worked out of facility reports so they'll know what the needs are. So at some point, when does it overtake it that it makes no longer sense to keep investing into the building and you should build new?
Okay, but they're gonna look at all of our buildings?
Yes, cause each building's gonna be handled separately to based on age, what program, what it's used for, and the instructional component, you know, depends where that's going. So it's gonna give you, uh, an idea of where to start looking at that, which will then start a whole nother committee approach and discussion of the public of how we're going to.
What sort of timeframe would they need before we would get the results?
That was a good question, that was asked and it's not a fast study, so I don't know if it would be ready. By the time we do anything on our current needs, it might even pass that, so, uh, they, we just started discussions last week, or actually just this week, on Monday. With one company and we have another meeting after spring break with the other company.
So they wouldn't, we wouldn't get the results in time by this, by this fiscal year?
This fiscal year, no, most likely not.
No. When we, in the discussions with them, um, you know, this doesn't involve just us, when they do a study like this, it is, the community is part of it. And they bring together community groups and, and community input into looking at this because they also need that in weighing out those factors of. Does the, does the communities want support, new buildings? And where is the, where are the trends and the attitudes in the community go into their findings? It's not just, you know, it's data points, but the community input is another data point that they use in, in, in this longitudinal study. I gave them a. Possible timeline of fall to spring to complete a work, the work like this and they said, you know, they, they said that that would be realistic timeframe.
So with that, since it doesn't affect, I guess, the discussion here, do we have something similar to this before in the past that we could use as a reference?
I don't, not that I've seen.
Well, I mean.
Outside of our, you know, work every year, looking at, you know, our needs.
Okay, I guess I was hoping that we would have already had this, just because I think it adds value to the discussion here. And I'm kind of sad that we don't, because I think that this would give us a little bit more of, um, a long term.
Well, the next document kind of helps you lead into that discussion. So yes, so dealing with the facility report, so obviously the facility report is not completed because we haven't vetted it with ten more buildings and the third party review. They're meeting again on tomorrow to kind of hopefully finish it up here shortly. Uh, this gives you what, on a summary level by building and then the next page by category of, you know, the needs from one to three and so forth. So you can see here that obviously we can take this data and look at the cost of construction or remodeling for the buildings based. based upon, you know, a ten-plus years. And if that dollar value starts rising to a point where it's no longer makes sense, you can build a brand-new one at a, almost the same price or, you know, what, an additional thirty, forty percent? That's when you start making decisions based on just the monetary analytical sides of, does it make sense to replace the building? Or just refurbish it at that point?
Okay.
Those, that's what this sheet will help you do. Now, dealing with the public opinions, you know, and the instructional use and all that is more factors that this company kind of takes it all into play and develops a plan.
So then who came up with this document?
So this is done by Plant Run, Tressa, and the district team.
Okay, got it.
Going through the buildings. The principals also go through this building, the building engineers go through this. And this is the culmination of building by building, you know, section by section, reviewing it and seeing what needs to be had.
Okay, so we do have some, okay, I, I understand now, so we do have some sort of data.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And so that's on a building basis for the whole, on a ten-plus-year look. The next page breaks it down by critical needs, by deferred, you know, four to six years, you know, seven to ten and ten plus. So this is where the whole conversation that we have on the agenda of short term and long term. So obviously, if you look at the totals, you're, you're well over eight hundred million dollars. There's no way we're gonna be able to address that on a short-term basis.
Do we have priorities then? Priority one, priority two?
So that's where we look at criticals, one to three years, that on a short term, we need to address.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, Trustee Moses.
Thank you.
Thank you for walking me through all the forms. That worked out well.
This is more for the viewers and obviously who are following, and I want to just make sure that we, we highlight this slide, which meant, I think, the fourth slide about the states that pay zero construction cost.
Right.
So I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wall. So in nineteen ninety-four, Michigan residents passed proposal A, which included a lump sum of saying school costs as far as construction of new buildings are the responsibility of the residents of that school district.
If they vote on, you know, doing it, otherwise you have to take away from the instructional program to handle that out.
Correct.
Before, each board every year would go to the public and say, we want to raise one mil, and we can use that one mil for this purpose.
Right. That, that's how it used to be.
Yes, back before proposal A.
Before that, before Prop A, did the state give money to school districts to build newer schools?
Some they did and some they did not. Depending if you were in formula or out of formula, it depends upon how much revenue you were bringing in.
I see, um, because what, this happened, it, it pretty much put older communities like ours at a very disadvantage. Because they're talking about equity of per-people funding, but they don't take older buildings into consideration when they do that formula, correct?
Right.
So if they compare us to, for example, Northville, which is a newer community, they don't say, well, dear one has older buildings, so we should give them more money.
Right, and that goes all the way back to where we've, Dr. Blake and I have talked before about the funding model in Michigan needs to be worked, because it doesn't address how much busing you have in a district, how many ESL students you have. It doesn't address all that, it's just a flat dollar value based on one point in time. There were districts that had a millage just went off, that lost that money because for that year, they decided not to levy it, and they lost that funding for future years. So there was winners and losers when proposal A came into B.
Correct, and my follow-up to that is, do we anticipate the legislature doing anything to change in the near future as far as, really, they talk about it in election years, oh, we're gonna invest in our schools? But looking at them, where you look at other states like Maryland that invested two point two billion dollars
Right.
in just building brand-new schools in their districts. And they looked at communities that were very old or that had older buildings, and they gave them more of the buck, more of the funding to bring their schools up to the standards of other communities.
Yeah, you've seen it more at the federal level, than the state level, because the federal level, they talked about the infrastructure.
Are we anticipating that?
We were in it, we were out of it. Right now, we're out of it.
Are you, we, I, I don't know if you're following, Mr. Wall, but are we anticipating that with the current administration, the Biden administration? Maybe with a, a build-back better plan by President Biden?
It's more recognized, but I haven't seen anything come out of it.
Substantial, similar to the community college free option. It's like, they don't know, probably, we, we don't know. Thank you. I just wanted to make those points clear because.
And just one other point, I just had the bullet.
I know, I know we get compared a lot, and this conversation came to be about in two thousand nineteen. We get compared a lot to Maryland, to Northville and Canton, and newer communities that have brand-new schools, brand-new. Obviously, in a COVID has told us one thing, that older buildings with ventilation
Right.
contribute unfortunately to the spread of infection. And newer buildings, where you have better ventilation, where you have better AC, where you have pretty much state-of-the-art buildings, are better equipped for our students in the new era.
And.
And it just makes me wonder when, and this is not a question for you, Mr. Wall, but for the legislatures that we have in Lansing and also at the federal level, is like, and I know they're doing their best, but this is for all of us as a nation, when do we go back and invest in our schools?
Right.
And not only invest in educate, in teachers and teacher salaries, which is great, which is amazing, and that's what we want, but we also need to invest in our buildings, our wearing and falling.
On page eleven of the first presentation I did shows you where Plymouth Canton has gone way below, above the average for bonding, because the community has accepted they want to maintain those newer schools or even build newer schools. And that, that's the conversation that we're gonna have to have at some point, you know, with our board and our public and see where they'd like to go.